Good evening. Welcome to our February Sholo Unified School District Board Meeting. We're glad you're here, both in person and online. We will first entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
I'll move to come out of executive session. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 3.1, roll call.
Don Larson.
Yep.
Melissa Schultz.
Yeah.
Stacy Anderson.
Yeah.
Kelly Boyer.
Yeah.
Paul Wyatt is absent.
Item four, we'll have a pledge of allegiance by Stacy Anderson and then an emocation by Kelly, please.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite, endless.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to be here tonight as governing board. We're grateful for the blessings that we have and we're grateful for those who are here to present to us. We're so grateful for our students as they provide for our students. We're grateful for our parents and our community members and we pray that that will please bless us and help us take it home safely tonight and use safety scenes in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll motion. A second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Do we want to move 9.1 up or wait? Okay. Item 6.1, approval of meeting minutes.
I can a motion to approve the meeting minutes? I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 7.1, ratification of expenses and payroll vouchers, tax credits, and activity accounts.
Motion to approve item 7.1, ratification of expense, payroll vouchers, tax credits, and activity accounts as presented. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 8.1.
9.1, I'll make a motion, move 9.1.
Up?
I'll make a motion, move 9.1 as our next agenda item. Second?
I have a motion and a second to move to item 9.1. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's talk junior high music. Teachers, coaches.
This is the Sholo Junior High School Select Choir, Women's Choir, and Men's Choir, Advanced seventh and eighth graders. We're going to sing the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say can you see why the dawn's early light was so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last meeting? Whose bright stripes and bright stars threw the perilous stars? All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave on the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Alright, so next we wanted to recognize our 2023 regional choir members from November. The White Mountain Junior High Regional Choir consists of schools from all over the White Mountain region as far as Payson, Winslow, St. John's, Round Valley, and everyone in between. And they audition and bring their top 10% of their students and we form a giant choir, auditioned, and then we put on a giant concert with about 100, 105 kids. We made up about a third of the choir, so I wanted to recognize them and their achievements. So maybe raise your hand like when I say your name. Alright, Brooklyn Ellsworth, Riley Higbee, Berlin Gagenheimer, Chloe Campbell, Devon Watson, Kenzie Harper, Riley Adams, Haley Sellers, Kayden Coons, Lam Tran, Sadie Wall, Kalen Herrera, Max Neronho, Reagan Brimhall, Bree McDaniel, Jenna Lee Prizel, Rex Garvin, Hendricks Watson, Dry Schroeder, Max Rigby, Bob Lipscomb, Gabriel Arona, Connor Michaela, Ryder Lewis, Egan Romero, Jet Lewis, and Chase Lindy.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Really proud of you. You sound awesome.
You're great. I love this show.
You did really well with your parts and your harmonies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gudlau. I just want to say real quick of the junior high choir. Listening to them at their concerts and so we're all aware of how good they are and I think the quality of that. Of course, I want to show that off to you guys, but I get to see them a lot because of the way I have to get into the junior high. So I get a little glimpse of their class quite often. So I get to enjoy the talent and what goes on in that classroom, probably more than any other classroom in the entire district. So I was really happy that they were willing to come out on this stormy night and share what they do.
Thank you.
Okay, back to item eight, public comment. Do we have any? No? Okay. Item, let's see, 9.2, business office finances update. Is Karen Hertel with us?
The two should be the academic high school intervention presentation. Sorry.
That's 9.3.
That's three on my schedule here.
Karen is 9.2.
Do you want to move it up? So someone want a motion, we move to 9.3 and then back to two?
I'd like to motion that we go to 9.3 and then go back to 9.2.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, 9.3, high school interventions presentation.
How are you guys?
Great. How are you guys?
We're good.
We have a presentation, but we also printed it just for us.
Okay, cool.
Thank you. Thank you.
So there's also the digital presentation, I think you see too? Yeah, okay, cool. So today I am Ashley Robertson and this is?
Bree and Garvin.
And we both work at Sholo High School. We've both worked there for quite a few years. Today, we have two objectives, speaking to you guys. And the first one is to share the vision of the positions that we're holding currently. And those current positions are academic interventionists. So we've both held different roles at the school, but currently we are academic interventionists. And we just wanted to share the vision of where they're, where they came from, how they align with our school progress and our school's vision. And the second piece that we wanted to talk to you guys about tonight is share the impact that we've seen. This is the first year that we've had these, so we just finished our first semester having two of us in these positions. And we just wanted to share the impact that we've already seen at our school. And kind of just highlight all of that. The reason why this is the first year for them is we were able to use Esser money through COVID to pay for these positions. As you know, this is the last year for that, those funds. So we just wanted to highlight what we're doing, how it aligns with our vision, and you know, potentially keep them permanent because we see the impact of them. So to talk about that vision part, Sholo High School's vision is every student will be ready for their next step in their educational and career plan, ECAP. So we want every student to be prepared for their next step, not our next step for them, what they want. And we take that every very seriously. We don't want 95% of our students to know what they're doing, 99. We want every student to be prepared. And with that, we have a couple of different tiers that we've been able to help catch every student. And first, we started with our tier one students, so things that all of our students get. And all of our students, we moved to standards-based grading a couple of years ago because we saw our eligibility, our grades every week. And it was nasty and gnarly and it was not what we wanted and we needed to make some adjustments. So at the high school, we moved to standards-based grading and that has helped a lot. And, but it hasn't fixed everything because our grading system won't fix everything. But that was one piece of our tier one. Another piece that I spoke on last year about is we also saw that there were just other skills that freshmen and high schoolers just weren't prepared for. So we added a freshman academy. So that helps students just be more prepared to transition into high school. And we've seen that be an impact. And that's what every student gets. But there are still students that need more than just that. So we had our tier two is where our four-day school week comes in because we have Mastery Friday. So there's students that need a little bit more, can use those Mastery Fridays and get just that little bit of extra help. And all of those things, we've been working on, right? Like, we moved to four-day school week with your guys' support a couple of years ago. We've been standards-based grading, we added freshman academy, right? So we're moving in this direction. But we've never been able to address the, since Mr. Marchant's been the principal, since I've been at this school. I think I'm over a decade now, which kind of scares me. But we've just never been able to address the elephant in the room. We see students fail. We see them fail a lot. And that's what we saw. We could catch a couple of them. We have great teachers. They could snag a couple. But we just didn't have a systematic way to help our tier three kids. That's where we come in. We help our tier three students. And on average, I think by the end of the semester, we worked with about 100 students combined. And these are the students that were getting all of that tier one, right? They have that standards-based grading, they're getting that freshman academy when they come in, they have access to those Friday masteries. But there's still kids that, that's not enough for them. They need more support. They're our tier three. That's the whole kind of, they're that top-tier kid. That's where we come in. And so this year, what we were able to do as, as we were creating it, is we were able to help, help those students that just needed more. And what that looked like is we identified it in a couple of different ways. And so I wanted to kind of talk about where the vision was. Our vision is to help the kids that just needed a little bit more. And the way that we do that is through our roles and responsibilities and kind of what that looks like on AA. On, is, so we have, I work full-time as this position and Bree gets to work part-time as this position. So there's two of us that get to be tandem. The way that we identify our students to be these tier three students. And we really focus on the academic more than behavior. They often go hand in hand, but we look at academic to identify them and then we can work through some of their behavior stuff, but we really focus on their academics. What we do is we do weekly grade checks. Any student that has three or more Fs at one time gets a conference with us. We just get to see where they're at. Sometimes they're sick and they were gone for a week. Of course, their grades are going to dip. Sometimes they just don't know how to ask for help and now they have somebody in their corner that can talk. Once they're on our list, they never go away. We just keep watching them and we keep supporting them and keep talking to them, celebrate successes in the hallways, things like that. So we do weekly grade checks to identify our tier three students. We also check to see if they're on track to graduate. So weekly grade checks, that allows us to be proactive. So we don't wait until they fail at the end of the semester. We don't wait until they have an F on their transcript. We catch them before that and try to help them before they hit that F on their transcript. But kids, they fail and it happens. So we also identify students that aren't, that are not on track to graduate, credit deficient. And we work with those students too. We also work with teachers and a teacher goes, "Do you know anything about this kid? This kid just really seems to be struggling." And we're like, "Well, I don't know them. I'll find out." And then we're able to just work with them, our admin, Mr. Marchant, Mr. Monette bringing students to us. They're like, "Have you been working with this kid? Do you know anything?" Our counselors, everyone. So we get to just help kids that are, you know, they're just struggling a little bit. So that's how we identify. And our weekly grade checks allow us to be proactive. And then when they do fail, we can catch them too. It feels a little bit more reactive, but we can still snag them and give them support. That's what we've been doing this semester because these haven't existed until now. So that's where we started, is we started with students that had failed three or more classes last semester, so spring of their last school year. And then we also took anyone that was not on track to graduate and worked with all of those students. The students that I started to work with that had failed three or more, none of them failed more than three classes. All of my students that I started working with, none of them failed three. Most of them didn't fail any. Like, we just saw this huge growth in them, which was really cool. And we'll get to that. I just get really excited about like the successes. So we also put them on academic probation. So yes, we check on them, but we also partner with their parents and educate them. So we have parent meetings and these parent meetings last an hour sometimes. We go over credit requirements, we go over standards-based grading because that's very different for a lot of our parents. We go over Friday mastery, we go over all of the things that they just need. Power school access, just the things to help them help their student. And then when they have a worry on their student, they have us that they've met in person, they've had a meeting with, and then can email us or call us. We can call them and so we really develop a stronger partnership with our students that are a little bit struggling. Those parent-student, and the students involved in these meetings, we don't do them without the student because those are, that's who we're working with. Those parent meetings are pretty, they're pretty amazing.
They are.
They're like, the most common comment is, "Where was this when my son was here?" Or, "Where was this when I was in school?" So it's been really, it's been eye-opening. And the turnaround for parent meetings is less than 24 hours. I called a parent meeting yesterday at noon and she was there at 3:00. Like, she's like, "Well..." I asked her, "Can you meet tomorrow?" And she's like, "Well, I can meet today." And I was like, "Okay." So it's 24-hour turnaround and they're there. So it's, they're just craving the help too. We also, so we go over all of the grading practices. This is kind of just what we go over. We also talk about the strengths and weaknesses of the student to kind of get a little bit of history on how, where the kid feels like they're struggling. And we focus and lean on those when we're working with the kids. And then, so we also conference with them weekly. So once they're on our case loads, there are weekly conferences, weekly student grade checks, and we create goals with them. A lot of times these goals will be like, "So math is not going well today or this week. What are you going to do?" "Well, I could probably go into that class Tuesday or Wednesday." "Tuesday? That sounds great." "Can I let, can I let Ms. Karen know that you're going to be in her room Tuesday?" "Yep." And then they're there. You just set those goals with them because sometimes they just get so overwhelmed. We just help decrease that stress and anxiety. We talk about being brave, like you're going to have to go trust your teachers. They want to help you. It's really, it kind of like, Mrs. Cota calls us life coaches. I affectionately call that. I stalk them, like, or nag them. We nag them to death. And so we set weekly goals, we set semester goals. I have a kid now that's thinking about going to a community college that had never been on the radar until just recently. So that's been really exciting. We also just can be that teacher communication because we talk to the parents and we're a little bit more available and all of that. So we can just swing in and go, "How's that student doing?" Or they'll come in and be like, "Huh," or they'll come in and share the successes too, which is pretty exciting. Parents reach out to us a lot because when they're worried, they're like, "I don't know what's going on in this class," or whatever. So we get that parent communication too. And Ms. Garvin has become key in this because she took a lot of the students that were credit deficient and she has mapped out and it's pretty awesome. She maps out how many classes they need to get done to recover, to keep them on track. And that physical for teenagers just really works and she does a really good job coloring them and keeping it in front of the kid. And Mr. Marchant had a student go, "If it wasn't for Ms. Garvin, there's no way I would have graduated." Because he's been able to keep track of everything because she was able to put it in a way that made sense to that, to that student, which was pretty cool. We also are in intervention, so if a kid does need to be, is placed wrong, maybe just didn't get identified as needing extra supports, maybe becoming a special service student, we're able to identify those quickly and we work with them and we work with the parents. So we're able to place students quickly. And speed is really important in high school when you're identifying for special services because we only got four more years, if, at best. Usually we have two and a half or three. So we're able to identify them and place them in the right spot faster. We also just support them in their graduation pathways. Maybe sometimes that is WMI, an alternative school. Sometimes it's making sure that they know that there's a Navit program out there for them because a lot of our students just don't have the confidence that that is something they could do. They're like, "Wait, I could, I could go to Navit?" Absolutely. Yes, you have the great, you have all of the things. So we're just able to place the kids in the right spot. We're able to help support schedule changes. So when I just was able to put a student in a class that he had no idea even existed, but talking to me, I was like, "You know, let's try this." And it 100% has clicked and it's the most success he's seen all year. So we're able to just identify and spend time working with these kids that are high need. There are tier three. Not all of our students need this, but the 100 that we're working with really do and it's been really rewarding. I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Garvin for this next piece.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about some feedback that we received. About two weeks ago, we sent out surveys to all the students that we work with, their parents, and then also all the teachers at Sholo High School. So I'm just going to go over a little bit of the feedback that we got. So one of the questions that we asked the students, "Do you think that working with your interventionist helped you be more successful?" As you can see, we got about 80% that said yes. It was very helpful. And then 20%, it was mostly helpful. Nothing negative there. All the kids really like coming to us. We told them, "Be honest in this survey. We don't know who it's, you know, we don't know you're the one taking it. It's anonymous. Just be honest." Which of the following supports do you feel the most benefit from? Weekly check-ins is a huge thing. So we're meeting with 100 students a week, every week, like one-on-one for a few minutes. It's just hitting, you know, a good portion of the kids that are at school. So that's by far the most beneficial. What level of support would you like from your interventionist this semester? Again, 80% said the same, so I think they like what we're doing. And then even a handful said they would like more from us. So I feel like, hey, we're not driving them too crazy and we're not nagging them too much. We're hitting just the right things. This is my favorite part. This is some of the feedback that we got. We did not make typos. We just took what they said and we put it right here.
But if you know me, that would trend very well.
But if you know me, that would trend very well for me.
Yeah. Um, so one student said, I passed more classes than what I did last year. Helped me get on track with credit recovery. I have someone that looks forward to seeing me succeed and supporting me through it. Last semester I got all my grades up and they stayed that way with the help of Mrs. Garvin. I have been more on task and more focused on improving my grades and working better. I really like how it helps being able to check in with someone on my grades. I had five Fs and I was able to narrow it down to one. So um, almost all of the feedback that we got was similar to this. Nothing negative. All of the kids are super supportive of what we're doing and they realize that we're just there to help them. Through this whole process, they're not in trouble. They don't go to detention. They don't have to stay after school or whatever it might be. They just know we're there for them and we're in their corner. Um, so just a little bit from the parent survey. Rank the level of success your student experienced once they started working with an interventionist last semester. Sixty-six, almost sixty-seven percent said very successful. Um, sixteen point seven mostly successful and sixteen point seven somewhat successful. So even the parents see that this is um helping their students and, and bringing more success to them. Same thing, the weekly check-in seemed to be the most beneficial to them. And then some parent feedback. Um, he passed all of his classes with the help and support of Ms. Robertson. For the first time since elementary school. She helped build his confidence and hold him accountable and she really got through to him. Better grades, turning in missing assignments, communicating with parents and teachers better, having goals. He has been working hard to stay on track with the help he is getting at home and at the school. And he is more aware of the work that he is lacking. So again, all positive feedback. Um, like Ms. Robertson said, when we have these parent meetings, I was really nervous to have my first parent meeting because, you know, you just never know, right? Every meeting that we have had with a parent has been totally positive. We haven't had one negative thing. They just appreciate the help that we're giving their student and, and wanting them to succeed. So a little bit of teacher feedback. One of my students saw success because of this program, passing all of their classes last semester. The student attended Friday mastery often and was proactive about changing their grade. Having an interventionist in their corner made a huge difference. I've seen success with multiple students that worked with the interventionist throughout last semester. Students that were headed for failure were able to find ways to succeed with guidance from the interventionist. It is a very positive, impactful and necessary program because there is no one else to do the job they do. Just helping kids to understand that their teachers are approachable and willing to help. I saw many students begin to communicate meaningfully with their teacher and begin building a relationship of trust. It has been, it has been great having another team player to help the student. The interventionists have been what we have needed for many years. The interventionists that they are using are effective and may, have made a huge difference in many students. The success that they are having is immeasurable. Um, we're just another support to our teachers as well. We have amazing teachers at the school. But there's just so many kids that they can't hit everyone. A lot of the kids that we work with are the kids that want to sit in the back of the classroom. They don't want to be seen. They don't want to be heard. And those are the kids that we're able to help.
Um, so just to hit on a little bit more data, um, I am kind of a numbers person. So um, by the end, we started with just about 20 students each, but every week we would gain. Because we were trying to be proactive about catching kids before they failed. Um, so by the end, Ms. Gar, Garvin was working with 54 students weekly and I was working with 41 students. Out of those students, seventy-seven percent of those students earned more credit this semester than the last semester. And then fifty-five percent of these students failed nothing. They earned every credit they were in, which they couldn't have said that before. Um, so those are, it's. This is very long-winded, but we're pretty passionate about it and it's brand new to our district. So it's something new. Um, we're using the feedback from the staff and from the parents and from the students to make things better for this next year. Or this semester, the current semester. Um, we're working with more students now than we have. Um, our day-to-day is pretty exciting too, because we, we talk about how we pull them into our room and talk to them one-on-one. And we are strategic about that. If they're struggling in math, we don't pull them out of their math class to conference with them. We're very strategic about that. Um, and we try to keep them very to the point, but as you've kind of heard from them, that, that one-on-one is super, super valuable to them. But it's not just that. We walk the hallways during passing periods or the kids will be walking to and from and they'll pop in and be like, hey, I got my math grade up. Or they'll pop in and be like, have you seen my grades this week? And so they, they just want to share those successes with us too. So the students are starting to own it. And the goal is for these, these 90 students to not need us, right? Like we're building skills in them so they don't need us forever. Would we want to keep them because we've maybe bonded with them? Absolutely. But those will be like the hallway conversations and then we'll snag other ones that are needing more help. Um, so our goal is to build skills in them so they don't need us on a weekly basis. They just need us to say hi to them in the hallway. And then they just are a little bit more successful. Um, that's my day-to-day. Did you have any extra?
Yeah. Um, I, I just feel like this is super important. Um, I think it's essential to any school to be successful. My favorite thing is I was in Safeway the other day and I hear, Mrs. Garvin, which you hear that a lot as a teacher. This kid like comes running up to me and he's like, guess what? I don't have any Fs and like turns around and walks away and my husband and I are like, wow, that was cool. You know, it's just so fun. These kids are, they're um. They're loving it. I have one student that I worked with. He was one of the first kids that I started working with. And he, first time I met him, had his hoodie up over his head, his hair down in his eyes, kept his head down the whole time. No eye contact or anything. He had six out of seven Fs um at the time. And by the end of the semester, he would come in, no hoodie on, haircut, look at me in the eyes and he ended the semester with one. So to go from six to one is just amazing, but more importantly, just his confidence and, and uh, you know, feeling that success himself is really exciting. So.
Do you have any questions for us?
I love the collaborative effort that's going into each of these kids and they're seeing that support and, you know, love and wanted to better. And making those connections with you ladies. So thank you. This is awesome.
You may not have had enough time to create this data or to have it. But I'm curious what kids have graduated or will graduate that would not have. Do you have any sort of an idea without this program?
Without this, so.
What kind of matters? If there's one, then it's, it's worth it. I'm just curious.
Yeah. Um, I mean, we started with those 40, so our original. So those are more of our reactive ones, the ones that were behind on credits. They failed three or more or were just behind. And really not on track to graduate. They had a lot of credit recovery. There were 40 there. Um, are, I think, I don't know this off the top of my head and I could look. On how many seniors and those juniors and seniors that we lose to other schools or just lose, just drop out. Um, I could look at that. I don't know, like, I wouldn't want to even tell you a number because I don't know. But I do feel like we are dropout prevention as well because one, we're catching kids before they fail. And two, we can place them right. So they, then if they're thinking of dropping out, we straight up have conversations about that. And if Sholo's not the right place for you, let's find the right place for you. So that they get, so they just don't feel lost. Um, we have referred a number of students to WMI when that is the appropriate placement. Um.
They make that transition. Do you still work with them?
No. They, um, with WMI because it's a standalone program and school. Um, they have their lead teacher and their support. We help support the transition and will um work with the team, the teacher lead out there. On any information that we feel is important to them. Um, but we let them go and be supported through that school.
And, and just to answer your question a little bit, um, just off the top of my head, I can think of five of the kids that I work with. Um, they didn't have so much the, the, the Fs. They were more on my caseload because they were credit deficient. And they are on track to graduate at this point. And they weren't.
Made up, caught up.
They've made up a lot of classes. Yeah.
And her caseload was more of the seniors that were behind on credits. And she's kept all of her seniors. None of them are at risk at the moment. They're all pretty on track.
Yeah.
They still have a lot of work to do because it's only February, but.
But they're where they need to be at this point.
Yeah.
Connections are so important to make knowing, you know, for a student to know that they have somebody to go to. There's that conduit between, you know, them and the teachers. So, yeah, thank you. You guys are awesome.
Thank you so much. Okay. Uh, do we want to go back to nine point two yet?
Yes, she should, I think she should be available, but.
Hey, I am nine point two.
Karen? Sometimes it takes a few seconds for it to connect. She actually said that she's about thirty seconds behind.
Are you two staying here for the whole meeting?
Hi Karen.
Hi. Can you all hear me? Okay?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. So I'm looking at your weather and I thought we were having bad weather down here and it's, I'm, I just have to say, I'm glad I'm in the rain. But good evening. Thank you for allowing me to join you virtually this evening. I hope everybody's able to, you know, navigate your roads up there. Um, definitely with the, the storms that are coming through, but I appreciate the opportunity to be able to give you an update this evening on kind of what's the, the. The current happenings in the business office. Um, so I want to give you a little bit of an update. I think the last time I spoke to you was actually just before the Christmas holiday. Um, because I was not able to join you at the January board meeting because I was out of town myself. Um, but to give you a little bit of an update, since we last spoke, we've been in um audit wonderland, I guess you could say. So for just before Christmas, we had the auditor general's office onsite, conducting the status of our 90-day corrective action plan. So that was one. I'll give you an update on kind of where we are with that. The other audit that we are also undergoing right now is our annual audit. As you may recall, every year, all school districts are required to go through an independent audit. That's done by an independent audit firm where they do a audit on all of our operations and our required procedures under state requirements, which we often refer to as USFR, the Uniform System of Financial Records. They also do a financial statement audit and they do a federal audit on our federal programs. To ensure that we're spending the federal funds the way that we wish to. Um, ironically, the, the funding source that was just discussed, um, that's funding our interventionist, the Esther Fund is, as you can imagine, a major fund right now for us. So going through, making sure that we're spending those dollars in the allowable way as we're closing those grants out. So that audit is going on as well. I was onsite, not this past week, but the week before with our auditors and pulling all of the FY23 transactions and supporting documentation. And the, the team has just been incredible in helping us pull everything together. So I want to just give them huge kudos. And then the other update that I want to give you a little bit of information about is some of the procedures that we are documenting to be able to roll out to all of our departments and our schools. So those are the kind of the three areas I want to touch upon. So I'll circle back and talk a little bit about the auditor general's office status review that they are doing. If you recall back in October, I shared with you that we were required to submit what's called a 90-day correction, corrective action plan. And actually we were given 45 days because um it was the second corrective action plan that the district had to submit. So we submitted that back in October and when I presented to you, I shared with you that during our review, as part of that corrective action plan, not only did we have to identify how we were correcting those deficiencies, but also our, our internal review of whether or not we felt those procedures and those requirements had been corrected. And when I shared with you, I had felt that about half of them that we were able to identify, I felt that they were, you know, kind of what I'd like to call a slam dunk. In the sense of, I felt that they were definitely corrected with our FY24 transactions. And the auditor general's office came out and they did their own independent evaluation on all of those different procedures. And looking at current year, so FY24 transactions to see if what we said we were doing is what we were actually doing. And they found similar conclusions that, you know, the majority of what we said we had corrected is corrected. So now what we're kind of in the final stages, I was hoping I would have an answer for you. I got a voicemail from the auditor general's office, actually today at three, saying that they weren't ready to issue the final report. But they were hoping to have it here to us the next um couple of days. So I'm hoping as early as next week, we might have the final status of that. But all signs look um moving in the right direction. I can't say for certain what the auditor general will say. But I felt that the informal feedback that we received was very positive on what we're doing here and now for FY24. So I will definitely be sharing, you know, and celebrating with the, the team if, you know, we are able to remove ourselves from that corrective action as we are, you know, so actively pursuing and all this, the hard work that everybody's doing to get us to that point. So that's a little bit of an update where we are with the auditor general's office. The 23, so FY23 is last school year. That's the independent audit that's going on right now. So we've been pulling all of the necessary information. I would say we're probably about 80% through that right now. We're still, you know, continuing to feed some of the information that the auditors are asking. They go through their procedures and they always have some follow-up questions. In fact, I have a meeting with the auditor tomorrow to go through some of the procedural types of follow-up questions that he has. So I'll be doing that with him tomorrow. And then, you know, that report will be issued no later than March 31st. Um, we'll have three audits issued. We'll have the federal single audit issued. We'll have the financial statement audit and the state audit all issued by March 31st. So that's where we're at with, with the um annual audit. And then the other item I wanted to mention is the procedures that we're in the process of documenting. Um, we've got the first draft of a, what I like to call a mega procedure manual that will give direction and guidance and consistency across all of our schools and departments of really all things um school business related, from requisitions to capital assets, to cash collection, to all of those um different areas in between, as well as all of the procedures that the business office performs such as cash reconciliations with the treasurer, bank reconciliations, federal tax remittances, things like that, that we are documenting all those procedures. So that when we, we are bringing on a full-time business manager, we have a, a well-documented procedure manual to kind of pass the torch with, to say, here are the procedures. This is what we're implementing and this is how we're going to continue to stay in compliance. So those are some of the, the key items. I might take some of Mr. St. John's thunder a little bit away because I know he's got some updates in his superintendent update. But the only other item I wanted to talk to you a little bit about is just as we are nearing into the spring season, that becomes budget season. Where we are starting to look at all of our projections for FY25. Still hard for me to say FY25 because we're going into 2025 for our school year. Um, it just seems like we're just talking about, you know, 2000. So we will be pulling together information. I'll be working with departments and schools to start building what that budget picture looks like. From staffing models to non-staffing expenditures, capital expenditures, operating expenditures. And bringing forward, um, I know that our intent is to bring some preliminary information to you at the March board meeting. So that's a little bit of an update of where we are with everything. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Oh, just thank you so much for all you're doing on this. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
And I do have one question. Are you still there? I'm sorry.
For the meeting, so any other questions come up, I'm here.
Okay. Um, did you come for the walkthrough last month?
Which walkthrough?
Was that in December?
For the, with the auditor general's office?
Yes.
Yes, yes. I was there that whole week. Yes.
Okay. How, how'd that go?
I felt it went very, very well. That's what I was saying is the informal feedback that I got from the auditor general's office. Um, they, they, they have to wait until they put it on, you know, the official auditor general's letterhead to give me the official feedback. But the informal feedback is, again, shows that the indications are that our current procedures are in alignment with where we need to be. We did not have every single area corrected. I didn't expect that they would see every single area corrected. For example, capital assets, we knew we did not have a physical inventory completed. We have that scheduled. We're doing that over spring break. So we will be doing a complete inventory of all of the district's assets over spring break and tagging them all correctly. So there were things that we just knew we didn't have done. So we told them, that's not done. You can't test that yet. So, but for the areas that they did test, I felt that we, we definitely showed the improvement from the, the last review. That was the 2022 audit that this corrective action plan stemmed from. So from that period to the current operating procedures, we have definitely seen that significant improvement. But I can't officially say that we're out of corrective, corrective action until we get that notification from the auditor general's office. But I'm hoping that we see that here within the next week.
I hope I'm not beating a dead horse. I'm, I'm curious, you know, personally, as they were here in person and you interacted with them on camp. were here in person, and you interacted with them on campus, so to speak, how was that feeling?
I thought it went very well, they were very good to work with, they were, the staff was incredibly cooperative with them, answered questions that they had, was able to pull the records that were requested, so I felt it went very well, on both the district side, as well as the Auditor General's team, they were very good to work with.
Good, thank you, that's what I was most curious about, the human interaction of it, and how that went.
Yes.
Thank you.
And they were very complimentary to the team, because they saw how hard everybody was working to pull everything together, and it was, the timing wasn't great, it was the week before Christmas, that's not what people wanted to be doing, is going through an Auditor General's Office review.
I just wanted to thank you for creating and developing the procedures manual, to keep us, you know, on track fiscally, and on the road to recovery, and keep us there moving forward, so thank you for developing that. She'll hear it. And no.
Okay, if nothing else, we'll move on. 9.4 Superintendent Report, please.
Okay, well, I'm going to start out with something, I don't know if I ever have, but some really good news. We have a new cougar that was born the other day, Mrs. Alex Snydering had a young boy. Yeah, big, strong, healthy kid, so, that's pretty awesome. I hope I didn't just violate you, but I probably did, but hopefully she'll appreciate that, and I won't get in trouble for it. I wanted to share a little email I got from our athletic director, real quick, I think this is always good news to hear, too. Hey Scott, just wanted to give you a shout-out for the sportsmanship that was displayed in the snowflake basketball games last night, Coach Francis managed through a very tough situation and maintained great sportsmanship throughout. Coach Simmons also had a player situation that needed attention, and before I could ask for help, he had already taken care of it. James has been this way all season long, not just in this game. In talking with other officials last night, we agreed that sportsmanship in a couple of tough situations was exceptional during this old-time rivalry, and we truly appreciate you and your coaches for the examples you are setting for the student athletes at Sholo High School, so I thought that was pretty cool. Kind of try to keep that up, and I'm as bad as anybody, sometimes I'm yelling things I probably shouldn't be, but hopefully it's all good, and, you know, it's friendly and never personal, but that was a great, great email to get from them, so. And then, kudos too to the board, being well-represented with the acadec, I've never been to an acadec and academic decathlon, decathlete, or decathlon, held at the auditorium, thank you for your support and being there, and that's, and to the butlers, Jerry for organizing it, and his wife for coaching it, and they did very well, they won it. It was pretty cool to watch all the kids. I'm not going to tell you how many questions I could not answer, or how many I could answer, I might have to be getting some help later, too, but, so, kudos to you guys. Facility-wise, I'm not going to go through all those things, but you can see, it's a little frustrating that the roof on the auditorium's not done, but it's pretty cool, and a lot of that is not only the roof, there's a ton of drainage that's been improved, because if you remember, when I first got here, I think in August, that floor, we actually flooded during our professional development, so, that's a cool project, it's a pretty expendy project, but that's an SFD thing, so, it's a good part of the facilities, improvements that we've been able to have, and you can see some of the other updates there that's going on. I'm excited, I don't know when that gets going, but the junior high gate replacement will be good, that's a big thing over at the junior high. We actually had them hold off, and as I told you, it gets a little frustrating, the timeliness sometimes, it just takes so long to get some of these things done, too, but we actually wanted to hold off on the junior high, because we didn't want to have that roof tore off, and, you know, have that leaking and doing more damage, so, there's some work going on over there, but for the most part, that'll happen more in the spring, and then they'll fix up those two modulators, too, because we really do need that space. As a matter of fact, we're planning on it, so I've talked to Mr. West, and, you know, we have to have that space, because we're going with that Cubs program, and, so, the promise is, and the expectation is, that those will be refurbished and ready to go by August. I was going to say August 1st, but I might have to say July 31st, but by the start of school, so, some different projects there that you can see that's going on, but it's good stuff. And then, transportation, we got the new Cougar Trip bus, I guess that was ordered before my time, so it's cool, it's a good-looking bus. Got a new mechanic hired that we're excited about. Unfortunately, I think we had somebody put a little gas in a diesel bus the other day, so we got to get that fixed, and things like that, but we got some new buses and some things going on there, so some good things, that's all reported from Mr. West, of course, I'm just sharing with you guys. I don't know if you have any questions or anything you want to go over in regards to that. Okay. And she was not stealing my thunder, right, but the 24-25 budget development schedule, I shared that with you last year as well, this is a little bit different, in working with Mrs. Smith, that you can see what our itinerary is, what the schedule is, to get that developed, for going into next year. And obviously, we, you know, it seems a little tight, so hopefully it isn't, because we want to keep all the programs that we have, you know, our intention is to keep all those things, so, we have to, you know, make all of that work, so it's very important we get good information, and we don't want to lose anything, so. We may not be able to gain, we do ask them what they want, because there's definitely some needs and some other things that we would like to get, but we want to certainly maintain everything. At least right now, there's nothing that we feel like we could cut or go away from, so. And then, recently, in December, too, the Auditor General, or I forget what group it was exactly, but they want to, they want to go around the state, I guess, and make sure that all the schools are meeting the emergency safety requirements by law, by Arizona statute. And so, come this, the 12th, this Monday, everybody will be receiving, all the schools will be receiving, charter schools and public schools will be receiving a survey, to fill out and complete, I don't know how complex that is, but we're all going to fill that out, and then, from there, I think they'll take some random schools, or some schools, whatever the why they'll pick them, I don't know, and they'll have to do even more work to see how they're doing, so, I feel like we're doing fairly well, but there is quite a bit in the law, you know, you have to understand all the law as well, to make sure that, you know, we're meeting the requirements, so, we'll see. That survey has to be done, I think, by about the 23rd, so there's not a lot of time to get it done, so, we'll be working hard on that.
We'll be working on it.
Well, good question. I've asked the administrative team, without seeing the survey, you know, Mrs., I don't know exactly who's going to have to be, I know the principals are going to have to provide some information, because I don't know how many drills, for instance, and some of the information that comes with what they've been doing with those drills, I have to get that from them, so, it's going to take some of their time, it's going to take some time, but who exactly and how much, we don't know until we get the survey.
Thank you. Item 10.1, classified personnel employment.
My motion to approve is presented.
I have a motion, a second, any, anything we need to discuss on this one? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 10.2, classified transfers, resignations, terminations.
My motion to approve is presented.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.3, certified personnel employment.
Motion to approve certified personnel as recommended.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.4, certified transfers, resignations, terminations.
My motion to approve is presented.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.5, activity personnel employment.
My motion to approve is presented.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.6, 2025 school calendar. Anybody want to?
Do you have a representative?
We do, yeah, I didn't know if you wanted to, I think, Beth, do you want to share some information with the board? I'd asked Beth if she would chair the calendar committee, so she got.
Good evening. I did ask Tanya Butler to be here as well, but she texted me and said, with the roads, I'm not going to come in, so. I, we gathered the committee back in December, representation from all sites across certified and classified, so we started with just some discussion about what our parameters were, which were, you know, certain, certain number of days, ending by, typically, we dismiss by Memorial Day weekend, so keeping those things in mind, we worked on some potential calendars, they also went back to their sites and gathered feedback from staff at their sites. We did have parent representation on our committee as well, and so, they asked specifically about, do we have to start so early? So, we then worked on an additional calendar, which was number two. So, we came back together, counted all the days, looked at all of the pieces, a couple of pretty predominant pieces of feedback from staff were that the staff do like having that first complete paycheck when they come back, that was important to them, and then, starting in the middle of a week, it seems to be like something that's, that's kind of the culture that we do here, but they do have pretty specific reasons about why they like to start on Wednesdays. Some of you who have been here for a while, a number of years ago, we started on a Monday, and I know overwhelmingly, kids and staff were like, that was the longest week ever. So, I think they're able to use those two days back, go through PBIS lessons, look at class syllabuses, and then, everyone's ready to jump off the next Monday. So, and I think you guys have the data, we did a Google form, sent it out to all employees, everyone had about a week to participate, and that was the feedback that we received. Do you have any other questions?
No, you know, there's just some chatter that I saw on Facebook earlier, and it's like, July, and I kind of wonder, well, is it just because it's July, you know, and it's not autumn?
One day, we hit July.
Yeah, I know, and I think sometimes, you know, if you look at Memorial Weekend, and where it falls, it falls almost a week earlier, so that pushes everything back, you know, so therefore, if you're going to get that 183, and all the days in, well, then you're looking at, you know, July, so.
And we looked, we even looked forward to see kind of where holidays fell, and I think we have one more year, that it will feel like a very early start, and then, the calendar moves enough, that Memorial Day is later, and it adjusts. And I think the other feedback that they did bring back were, yes, we don't like starting so early, but we don't want to give up fall break, spring break, a holiday, so that also was something we had to take into consideration.
Well, I like the fact that there's a three-day weekend, and every month, too, at least one three-day weekend, and I think that's important, and I think parents appreciate that as well, so.
Lots of breaks built in.
I'm glad you continued that with the committee, so, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I think there's some discussion that should be had, I mean, I had the same reaction looking at this, that I think a lot of us did, July, are you kidding me? How early next it's going to be? We won't have any summer left. But I can understand all the considerations that went into making it, we only have a four-day school week, and we have a full week of fall break, and a full week of spring break, and we have to be done by Memorial Day, and we need snow days, and those days have to come from somewhere. So, I mean, I don't love it, but at the same time, I can understand why this is kind of what we needed to do.
I think every few years, it just falls just right, and you've got that early, you know, start date, you know?
Right.
Because you're trying to get all those days in, and it's been proven in our district that everybody wants to be done by Memorial Weekend, they don't want to come back afterwards, you know, and so, yeah, I just think.
And the state testing isn't going to move later, if we move our calendar later, either.
And we've still got to get those 180 days in, you know, of instruction, so, yeah.
I mentioned, too, that that graduation date, that really does impact everything else.
That is true.
Your kind of your main priority, which was a parameter for them, that this is where that has to fall, it's just going to limit you some, then, for sure.
If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve one of the two calendars.
But I'm going to go ahead and make motion to approve number one.
There is also the thought of, I mean, there are some districts that do year-round school, that would.
Pretty much what this is.
Yeah.
And we're getting towards that, yeah?
We just started calling it that.
Right, and so, yeah. Anyway, I have a motion, I have a second, for calendar.
Number one.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? No kind ofs?
I mean, kinda.
Kind of, yeah.
I mean, one snow date isn't really reasonable, so, no, I mean, for the number two, only has one snow day, and would only, wouldn't, so, I voted aye.
Logically.
Well, I made the most.
I know that was a tough thing to put together, and.
Yeah, thank you for all the hard work that must have gone into it.
Yeah, make it all fit, just right.
There's never a perfect calendar.
Okay, item 10.7, related services salary placement schedule. Mr. St. John, do you have this one?
I can, if you guys have any questions. It essentially allows us to hire our own DTOT, and I think maybe some speech, some of our own people, rather than going through the consortium, which, when you do the analysis on it, it's, we're using them enough, so it's financially, actually, have been wiser, would be wiser if we could have our own, so this would allow us to look to do that. And I think one of the concerns that might come up is, well, we still need to work closely and well with the consortium, which that agreement will be on next month's agenda, but I know that Mrs. Marsh, Director Marsh, and Associate Superintendent Lanny Klaspe, they work hand-in-hand very closely together, and so, you know, it's just, it's a benefit to us if we can, right now, for us to be able to find, hopefully we can find them, that this is the approval of that schedule, to allow us to try to hire them as our own employees.
Successful in doing so, but I make a motion to approve. Thank you. A second.
I have a motion, and a second, any other discussion on this? I assume if we can't, if we don't get an appropriate candidate, then we would just fall back on the consortium, right?
Yeah, so, but again, that's the assumption, though, that they find one.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, and that's the thing, so we are kind of battling for the same people, if you think about it, too, potentially, but that's where they work closely together, so it's.
Well, then, we always have to have the relationship with the consortium, in case whatever candidate we, if even if we were to get a candidate, if something were to fall through, or there was a change, you know, we'll just have to make sure we maintain that relationship, but it sounds like Director Marsh is planning on doing, so.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. 10.8, student information system, add U-E, ungraded elementary option. Who gets to talk to us about that, if we need anything?
I think, I'd let Director Ramsey talk you about it, it's really just kind of a technicality, I think, guys, but it requires your approval. She wrote a nice memo on it, but it's something, it's a way that we, to identify some kids in the ADM program, so, I don't know.
Yeah, all the information is right there, but basically, what it does is just give us an opportunity to collect additional funds for students who are high-needs, specialized students that are kindergartners. It's a very low number of students, we, right now, we only have one, but we could have more in the future, and it's just. just additional funding that could be used for special ed programs, and it'd just be added in with the, the rest of the budget, but just additional funding. All I have to do is click a box, so.
We'll take all we can get, right? I'll make motion to approve.
A second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.9, March Regular Meeting Date.
It falls during spring break right now.
Guys did that. What did you move forward on?
We didn't, we had to discuss that that would be on this agenda. So, what is the date that we need to?
Twenty-first.
The 14th to the 21st?
So, from the 14th to the 21st?
Yeah.
It gives us a little time, too, to, to do a few things in the business office that we would like to get done before that.
So, for me, that week, the, the choir is singing the National Anthem at the Suns game that night, and I was going to have my boy, I was going to go to see my boy do that. That doesn't mean that, you know, you can't hold the meeting anyway, but just so you know.
But, you know, the only, I don't have any problem doing the other days. I just don't know if this particular venue, which is ideal for our, for our community, I think, as far as, you know, and all that. And it's just, they're used to the Thursday, but, you know, you could try, we, we could try the 20th and check with the city. If not, then we know we can host it, which is actually a pretty nice venue, too, of course, at the, the training part of the new business office. But it just doesn't allow us to do the virtual as well, or for, for people to attend that way virtually, so, that's a tough call, I think.
John, if you're okay with us doing it without you, you know, Mr. Wyatt could.
Absolutely.
I'm going to have the meeting on March 21st.
A second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Motion passes. 10.10, Nicholas Homestead Elementary Teacher Shortage.
We do have an update there. We do have two pairs that we were able to hire since, since last month, so that's good news.
They're assisting in which ways?
Yeah, so there was at least three classrooms that we wanted, so I still need, I think, I believe, one more. So, if we can still work, if, if we can find a teacher, we'll do that, but, so, I think we're still down to one. It would be, from the class sizes, is larger than we want, without help, as we can see that that kind of help makes a big difference, you know, the extra help. So, and that's what we budgeted for. We want, it's not like we don't want those, so, we were able to find a couple pairs. We just haven't had that luck before, but.
Teachers feel supported? Do they feel that this, you know, that it's helpful, and they're glad they're there, and?
Well, yeah, so, you know, it's, one of the things that's, that's kind of interesting, because when you incorporate, you could either, you know, you can keep the larger class size and have two. Could be a pair and a teacher. You could have a dual, a teacher, teacher. But when you're doing that, you're, you're team teaching, which is not unheard of, but it's, for instance, in all my years, I can't say I've really experienced that. I can't say how that would work one way or the other. So, that would be new, and I'm guessing it would be new for them, too, a little bit.
So, it is working out well, then, in the classroom for them?
Well, I, I know it's definitely beneficial and working positively, you know? But, you know, you'd have to ask them, and I think it's too early, you know, to say how that works a little bit.
So, when you say "ask them," you're talking the teachers specifically?
Yeah, well, I mean, eventually, and, and, and the principal, but I'm just saying it's, it's a little early, you know, when you're just hiring those people to go in there. Or if it was a teacher, you know, what's the expect, expectation? Am I bringing that teacher in there as a pair or as a team teacher? That's going to be a different dynamic, is all I'm saying. So, it depends, or if you split the class, that would be different, right? So, there's different ways to handle that, but there is, there's definitely more expertise, more time being spent engaging with the adults, with another, having another adult in there with, with the students. So, that's, that's the win. That's a win, no matter how you look at it. But it's definitely a different environment to have two teachers in there, which is not what we have, actually, but we could have, if we could, if we found one, that's potentially could happen.
Do you still have active job postings for teachers at Nicholas that we're just not getting applicants?
Correct.
Okay.
Can be my next question, because I see it on Facebook all the time, that we are, we are actively looking, I, you know.
I noticed we have job postings on Indeed now, which we didn't used to have.
Yeah, right.
We talked about, you know, a long time ago, sat down, and we were struggling, "Well, how do we advertise?" Let's analyze that, because are we taking every action we can take? And obviously, we don't post it in the New York Times or whatever, but.
Maybe we should, no?
Maybe. And we talked about that even with local positions, though, right? In the pairs and the bus drivers, and at least in our, some of our local newspapers, because it all costs money. But we, we feel like we have to do everything we can. And one area that was actually helpful, but, and I kind of thought we were doing it, and then for some reason, maybe we weren't, and it's odd stuff that I don't even, I think it had something to do with a credit card issue, but using Indeed is actually been helpful. So, you know, that's, so, but we want to analyze all those different things from getting them on these virtual boards at, at the universities, actually calling the universities, calling the different education departments. There's just, there's a lot of different actions you can take that can be helpful towards, towards your recruiting.
Do you want to go to some graduation ceremonies in the spring and hand out brochures of Sholo? It's a great community.
Maybe.
Have some quotations of how wonderful we are.
About the whole teacher shortage is, a lot of it is, it's just, it's salaries, you know, and it's, but it's, and it's also churches or places to live, right? So, there are some very good programs out there through, ASU, I know, has a very good one, I think Grand Canyon, there, a lot of them are working on that, where they help, where they kind of, where you can grow your own. Were you just okay, I think, in the last meeting, last month, a program that allows us to help some of our own to, to get certified in the special education area certificate? So, there's going to be more of those, and that's actually good, because those people are here. And the problem is, a lot of times, you're just losing one from one program to another program, though. You know, it's not always, you still got to replace for what they were doing there, but at least we were, we were fortunate enough to find a couple new pairs to mitigate that situation a bit. So, that's a good thing, and we're going to continue to do that. I just talked with Principal Ben Nelson just the other day about what we thought was a, a potential candidate, a teacher candidate out there, that he said, "I, I, no, that's not one." And so, I'm like, "Well, maybe, what's going on here? How come somebody thinks there is one?" That kind of thing. So, he, he's on top of that and looking to, to fill it. It's just a matter of just finding them.
Hopefully, we've been working with parents and communicating with them, and hopefully building a stronger relationship, you know, compared to what we saw last month, and I'm hoping.
I'm on you.
Is there any talk of any movement of teachers from maybe one school to another? Or is that something that is definitely not going to happen, I mean, even for next year? You know, kind of trying to make sure that all the schools are getting what they need?
Yeah, I think, you know, I, I think that's a concern of, from a, that would be fall on my shoulders, I think, you're right. That's the big picture look, because each principal's going to advocate for their own school. So, that's where sometimes, as a district superintendent, you'd have to step in and say, "No, this is the way we have to do that." That's just, it's just good use of your, your budget, right? So, sitting and, and having discussions with your committees and your groups, certainly with your business manager, and going, "Hey, we can't afford another teacher here, but we got these pretty small class sizes here and large here. We have to move this teacher over here." So, in the end, that, I don't like to dictate. I'd much rather come to a consensus and do, but if, if you had to, you know, you, you would say, "This is, we have to do it this way." It's just, I think it's common sense. So, certainly, Nicholas will be looking at their, their, the traditional classroom to, to the departmentalized processes and all that, and they're very good, and they're careful at looking at those kinds of things. I, I don't know that every parent's always going to be in total agreement with that, any more than they probably were with the calendar. But it'll be, it'll be interesting to look at all the data, this, the assessments, and also the, the qualitative data of our parents and concerns and things that have happened with kids, that it's, it's not just those test scores, right, that are the only indicator of, of what's going well and what's not going well. So, you know, that's yet to be determined, to what that'll look like in '24, '25 for Nicholas.
Are they a large class? Are, are they a large class? You know, are, are there a lot of kids in that class?
In the, in the fourth.
You know, compared to be, you know, that was older and younger? Because my daughter was one of a very large class, and I think she graduated in 2021, I want to say. And we had a teacher that moved up with those kids. You know what I mean? Because they were large, and so, I don't know. Maybe that's something to look into. I know they're fourth graders, so there'd only be one more year, but maybe that's something we need to consider for next year? I don't know. But like, my daughter had the same teacher, Ann Hall, for two years in a row, because she just moved up with, you know, Ann, and it was wonderful.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's something that schools do. I've heard some parents that don't like that.
And.
Sometimes.
And, and, well, I think it was successful all, all across the board, but, you know, because not all the kids stayed with that teacher. My daughter just happened to, because, you know, I wanted her to, basically, but.
There's some advantages to doing that. That's why school districts do that.
So, maybe that's something to look at, too, just moving a teacher up with them. I don't know. Okay.
With the Cubs program that was approved back in, is it December or January? December? Is that something that's being pursued for this school year or for next school year?
As soon as possible.
Or is that something where there's a job posting, and we're trying to actively hire for that position now?
Yeah.
And have there been any applications?
That, those, those kind of details, I don't have.
Okay.
I, I know there is an internal candidate, but that's a problem, because she's really good in the sped world, too, and so.
She's not a fourth grade teacher, right?
No, that's true. But that, but I mean, that's the thing, right? So, if it was, that's the problem that that caused. So, it's a, you know, you're taking a step, you're doing some good things, but sometimes there's a consequence to that. Often, most of the time, there's some kind of consequence to any decision we make.
But I, I feel like this position is something that someone who maybe doesn't want to have their own classroom would still maybe be willing to come and do in our district, even if, you know, and it, as a different role. So, it's maybe not competing with a classroom teacher as much for candidates, because there might be people who aren't interested in having their own classroom, but are, would be interested in a role like this, so, hopefully.
I have some thoughts. I'll, I'll be a little bit frank here. I, my expectation for this particular agenda item was that we were going to hear some specific things that are being done. I'm very perplexed that the principal of that school is not here, when there's an agenda item on the, on the agenda that specifically deals with issues that are happening at his school, that in my opinion are, is volatile, too strong a word? I felt like we had some people speak to us last month who were extremely upset and had some very specific issues that needed to be addressed. One, one of which, I didn't know about until after the meeting, but we have children being spoken to in a manner with foul language, name, name-calling of children that are our children, and, and, and we don't have anybody here to address this. I'm not sure that, you know, Kelly and Lamista and, and Stacy and I and Paul should be the ones sitting here coming up with ideas of how to fix the problem.
I don't either. I don't think that can be talked about.
If, if we want to, and then if we want to, and if we want to micromanage, I suppose we could micromanage. But to not have an administrator of a school that we're specifically talking about some very strong issues not come to the meeting, for me, is really unacceptable. And what we ask to be talked about, what I've just heard, in my opinion, is fluff. It does not address anything that we talked about last week, I mean, last month. Doesn't talk about, doesn't address anything that the parents stood up and shared their Am I out of line? I don't know. By the looks, maybe I am out of line, and maybe by the looks, I'm not, but.
I personally would have liked to have seen some type of a report.
Yes. That was my expectation. We were going to have somebody stand up and tell us.
Yeah.
What they've done to fix the problems. Here we are, another month away.
There's a teacher shortage.
Okay. What are we, what are we doing to, what are we doing to make the best possible outcomes in that? Because apparently, for some people, we're not having good outcomes. So, if we're just going to say, "Sorry, you know, teacher shortage, nothing we can do."
Work with those people.
Take your kid somewhere else.
Work with those people. That's how, that's how it's supposed to be.
And why is somebody not here letting us know?
This isn't, no. But this isn't where you work with people, you work with them.
No, why don't we have a report? Why don't we have somebody here with a report?
Okay.
Why do we not have somebody here with a report to us about what we asked for last month?
I, I think.
Specifically, tell me.
Specifically, we asked for their.
What did the board have a vote on that, so I, because I don't know of anything?
There was no vote, but we were, we were, we asked for someone to report to us, to communicate with these people, have a meeting with these people, and that was a month ago. Are we going to wait until next month? This is a leadership problem that we have in this district, and it needs to be fixed, and it needs to be fixed now. I do not want to wait until next year or next month. So, can we please have somebody here at our next meeting, March 21st, from Nicholas Homestead, to give us a report on what is being done to fix and address the concerns of the parents of our children, our most prized possession that we need to take care of? Can we have an administrator or somebody? A yes or no question.
Kevin, I think what would be.
We have too many I-don't knows.
I, I think what would be really helpful for everyone is something similar to the presentation we got earlier today, where someone says, "Here are some problems that have been identified. Here are some of the things that we're, we've already been doing to try and solve these problems. We've been trying, we've been actively having job postings. We've started posting on Indeed. Anything else that we, Kevin, I would discuss. Here are other ideas we have for the future to continue to try and solve these problems."
Participating job fairs.
If somebody has a solution, I'm all ears. I mean, we're all, that's.
It's your job to get with your administrators and come up with those solutions.
They got to be practical. You can't just point and say, "I got to fix something that's not fixable." You want me to fix the teacher shortage in the United States?
No, I want you to, I want you to fix our situation we have at Nicholas Homestead that needs to be fixed. We need to address the parents. We need to maybe include them in the, in the solution.
Of course we do. Again, yeah.
But, but here we are, a month later, and nothing's been done.
Okay.
If things are being done, it would be nice if we had a presentation saying, "Look, here, here's what is being done, and here are more things we can, we plan to continue to do," so that we can see what the problems are and what the, the pathway, what?
We know what the problem is. We have a teacher shortage.
So, if, if someone, if you or someone else in the administration stands up and says, "Yes, I agree. These are our problems. Here are things we're trying to do," then we're, then that shows us that you're hearing that those are actual problems, and that you're taking steps to try and solve the problems, instead of seeming like the problems aren't being taken seriously.
Who do you want to come? And I don't know who's going to do that. I don't know if they're going to go, "What do you want me to do?" They're going to say, "I don't know what you want him to do. I can't have somebody just show up."
My expectation, I think I've already said it, but I'll say it again, because obviously, it didn't mean anything the first time. My expectation was that we would have someone here who would have addressed the things that we talked about last month. that we talked about last month to let us know what's being done, to fix the problems, to help the problems, to help children feel like they're getting the attention and education that they need and for obviously the parents to feel that way about their kids. I thought that was pretty clear last month.
You every day, John, and that's not something we.
Where, where is your principal?
An added board?
Where is your principal here to address this item?
He shouldn't be here. There's nothing he can do here that's going to help this situation.
He can't, he can't give us a report saying, we're doing this, this and this. We talked to the parents, we came up with these ideas, we did this and this, this. Am I, am I just like way out there on this?
I think a, a situation and a problem was brought to us, Kevin, and that's actually why we asked.
There's a problem.
But no, let me finish. And I think that what my expectation was, was that there was going to be collaboration and communication between not only Mr. Van Nostred, but our staff members because I know that I want them to feel supported and I know I want them to feel like we are supporting them in trying to overcome the problems that are taking place in the fourth grade. And I guess that's what I expected to take place over the last month and then just basically have a report. Yeah, well, you know, staff and admin and parents have come together. These are, you know, ideas we've come up with. Hey, we've hired two more pairs, which is, I think is wonderful and hopefully will be an asset for them and assisting in the classroom. I guess that's what I was expecting is just a report and saying, hey, yeah, we're all, we're all collaborating and we're all trying to figure out a solution to this problem. That's what I was expecting.
Me too. And the fact that, the fact that that was our expectation and we asked you to do it and you didn't is extremely frustrating to me. In the immortal words of Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about that.
Can we ask to form a committee, a committee of the board? And ask for certain members to be all part of that committee? That could be from, we could ask that there's some staff members, an administrator of some kind, parents, and task them to coming up with, you know, basically what we've been asking for.
I'd be willing to do that.
Yeah. I have to be honest with you that, that, I mean, that's what the administrator is for is to create that and make that happen and stuff, so, yeah.
But, but we can decide to make our own committee, can't we? Am I correct? You?
Yeah. How do you want to work that? Do you want to, I mean.
I mean, what are we interested in having? Do we want to ask that the committee be formed, a committee of the board? So then that means that when they have their meetings, those would have to be open meetings that minutes are taken and are on the record.
Who would you like to task with that?
Anyone have a suggestion?
The principal, right? I mean, that's, that's where it needs to begin.
And hopefully enough work has been being done that they can spend their time on the, part of the time on the committee can be saying, just kind of laying out that these were, these are the problems, here are the, here are the steps that we are taking and here are the steps we plan to take in the future. And hopefully those things are already being done and it'll just be a matter of talking about them, getting them down on paper.
Put it on paper, yeah. Yeah. What do you guys think?
We have the same problem with kindergarten last year at Whipple, so you can involve all elementary schools.
Yeah.
Yeah. It doesn't have to be specifically for Nicholas Homestead fourth grade.
I think we need to start there though. I think we need to address those concerns for sure.
Shortages at every school.
Would we want it to be specifically Nicholas or do we want it to be a more generalized teacher shortage problem committee?
Teacher shortage.
And, and with the expectation that there will be participation from Nicholas?
Yeah, we need to accent on, on, on addressing these concerns that were brought up to us last month. So can we, can we task you with asking the principal to, at Nicholas to head that up? Okay?
So Kelly, yeah, Lamista, you two will be a part of that?
Sure. Yeah.
One of you will chair it, I'm assuming. Yeah, we can do that. And then who we want?
Is there always a?
If you would do that.
Parents want to be on that or?
Yeah, we want to have parents on that. We want to have.
Actually, a great idea.
Teachers.
So we're going to have a committee of the board that will include Mr. Van Nostred and other administrators if they so choose. The purpose of the committee will be to talk about our situation with regards to teacher shortages and talk about, lay out what the problems are, what the, what actions are already being taken to address the problems and ideas for future actions that can be taken to address the problems. Is that correct? We want, Mr. Van Nostred, any other administrators who want to participate, teachers definitely from Nicholas, but if there are teachers from other.
Include them.
Do we need to say that we have to have at least one teacher from each school or can we leave that up to just anyone who wants to join the committee?
Good idea.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would offer it that way.
Okay. And then also parents, definitely parents from Nicholas, but it can be parents from any school as well.
You bet.
So someone will need to send out an email to the, the staff and parents.
You want to chair it? Do you want to limit this committee or is it going to be a, how many? I mean, we'll talk about, we can do it. I think it's a great idea, actually. If that's what.
And it could be that if there's a group of parents from Nicholas who, you know, they decide that there's one or two of them who want to participate, that the other parents kind of, that they can kind of decide, we can't have 50 people in the committee.
My apologies for not coming up with this before because I think that's a great idea. We'll, we'll put her together.
Okay. Would you please report to us next month how that's going on and I would like.
How's the committee doing?
Yeah, yeah. And, and I would like some specifics about Nicholas, please. Okay? Are you guys okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Moving on. 10.11 Gifts and Donations. My, my thing is slow. Does anybody have these up that wants to read them if they got them up? Mine's not coming up. Okay.
There's a lot of them.
There are a lot of them. I'll just go through it real quick. Above and Beyond, Buffalo Bill's Tavern. Hope that was appropriate. Just joking. Anthony Chapman, I believe that says. Majestic Music.
Sweet Home Arizona.
Sweet Home Arizona Boutique. Thank you. Torreon Golf Club, Sean Roberts, Sholo Auto Parts, The Skiers Edge, It's Magic in Bloom Nursery. Is that Alan Coda? I think that's what that says. Darby's Cafe, House of Art Tattoo, White Mountain Steel. Let's see.
Her name Dickerson?
Was that on that same list?
No, it's another, it was another file.
Oh, okay. Okay, read that one. I have the other one.
Arden Dickerson?
I have the Jim Pine Top Sholo, Kale Cookies LLC, and I think that's all of them. Want to express our gratitude and appreciation for all the donations that we receive, the generosity of the community and individuals is impressive and, and appreciated much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, and accept the donations, Gibson donations.
Motion.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. 10.12 School Properties Disposal. There's a long list of these. Anybody have any questions or concerns or anything?
I'm going to approve as presented.
Second, go ahead, second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 10.13 Student Fundraising Activities. There are several of these also. Anybody have any questions or concerns?
I'm going to approve as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. 10.14 Out-of-State Field Trips.
I'm going to approve all out-of-state field trips. Second.
And motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any other future agenda items? I'm, I'm curious, I don't know if this is the spot to talk about this, but when do we address some of these positions that we need to, business manager floating that position? These interventionists? I'm, I'm curious. So will that be part of the, do we need to have anything specific on that or just see where it lies in the budget? Because I don't want to forget these. I don't want to make, I want to make sure that these don't, you know, slip by us somehow and we don't have the, the opportunity to continue.
Kevin said that they were trying to, they were trying to keep the.
They weren't going to cut anything, so I think that is their.
As they were building the budget, they were trying to keep everything.
Do we know when we're going to float business manager position?
We were going to try to get this district superintendent kind of going and then once we got that.
Then after that?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Actually, pretty good timing really in terms of getting.
I don't want to be late is all.
Is that on what's kind of the cycle for the business manager position usually?
I'm not 100% sure.
Most certified staff.
Okay. All right. In order to continue for the next three items, we'll need to go back into executive session. So I'll entertain a motion to do that.
I'm going to executive session. Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. We'll go into executive session.